Okay. We can proceed while we're... Okay. So, I am about ready to call this meeting to order, but before we do, I would like to have our city attorney report out from the results of our closed session meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council met in closed session to discuss two cases of existing litigation, Hacienda Realty versus City of Montessorino and Tom Tabrizi versus City of Montessorino. In the Tom Tabrizi versus City of Montessorino case, the city council authorized the city manager to enter into a settlement agreement. The vote was 3-2 with council members Turner, Vice Mayor Willsheimer, and Mayor Craig voting in favor, council members Ann Standing and Rogers voting against. We have copies of the settlement agreement available to the public next to the screen. And that was all, the only action that was taken during closed session.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, I would like to call our regularly special city council meeting. Yes?
Sorry. The only thing would be to see if there was any public comment on the closed session.
Oh, okay. Is there any comment on the closed session report that you just heard? Okay. Yes, Councilmember Ann Standing.
Yeah, I have a comment on it. I... It's 6:08, and the city residents have just been given an opportunity to take a look at a settlement agreement that we were given at 5:30, forty minutes, less than forty minutes ago, which contains several documents, one of which is a settlement agreement that consists of five pages, along with some exhibits, an Exhibit A and Exhibit B, which is a three-page description of an agreement concerning covenants running with the land. And although I'm not permitted to discuss, actually, it's, yeah, three pages of covenants running with the land, and then a legal description of the Hacienda property and the Tabrizis property, and a drawing. And I obviously cannot comment upon how many people read it. I cannot comment upon how many people even understand what a covenant running with the land means, but still, with a vote of 3 to 2, in what I consider to be perhaps one of the most reckless things that our city council could do, approved a settlement agreement with, in my view, with very little opportunity for people to really read and digest this, which is not to say that this might not be the wisest and best thing for the city to do, but there's absolutely no reason in the world why this issue should be rushed to judgment the way that it has. This has been an issue that has been before the city for well over ten years. It's been one that's been very hotly debated. And frankly, this settlement agreement modifies, in my view, a significant number of changes into the plan that has been, that was previously approved by the council. It changes some of the road configurations. It changes the size of some of the multifamily dwelling units. It squeezes together, if you'll remember the initial drawings, and if you look at the settlement agreement and study it, you'll see that the center part of this particular project, which has a significant number of homes that are attached, some unattached, has now been squeezed together further. And the density remains the same, which is apparently acceptable to three members of the council. But frankly, when you squeeze those units together, I think we all know what happens when people get put into closer confines, and it's not terribly, terribly productive. I just think that this is not a slight or insignificant modification of this, and frankly, in my opinion, I think the settlement agreement is, was entered into erroneously, and I don't even think it was done consciously with people having a full and fair understanding of what this includes, because I'm not sure I understand, and I've been practicing law for 44 years, what a covenant running with the land means and how that applies to future real estate considerations. So, I just wanted to make those public comments.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah. I'd like to briefly comment on that. I'd like to just add for the record that I strongly disagree with what Councilmember Ann Standing just said. This doesn't feel rushed. I feel I understand enough of what is going on, definitely, and to call something that's been going on for ten years rushed is... Okay, I won't comment any further on that, so I strongly disagree.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So at this point, I would like to open our special city council meeting, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And we have a real call, please.
Councilmember Ann Standing?
Here.
Councilmember Rogers?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Willsheimer?
Here.
Mayor Craig?
Here. Okay, so we've already talked about the closed session. That brings us to the orders of the day. Do we have any changes to the orders of the day?
There are no changes.
Okay. Thank you. Oral communications at this point. Anybody wishing to speak on a topic that is not on the agenda tonight will be given three minutes to do so. Anybody wishing to speak? Seeing none, we're going to move on to item number one, under Unfinished Business 17765, Dave's Avenue, referendum challenging the general plan designation. Oh. Isn't there one? Oh, I was looking at the wrong agenda, sorry.
I don't think we have a consent.
Sorry. Oh, that's all right. Okay, so I think we will start off with the staff report on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, as we're all aware, on June 15, 2016, a referendum petition was filed challenging the general plan amendment to the First Baptist Church located at 17765, creating a public residential multifamily general plan designation. At that time, the, I'm sorry, prior to that, on June 6, 2017, the city council voted to place the matter on the November 2018 ballot. When the referendum qualified and was presented to the city council, the council had a decision at that time to either place the matter on an upcoming ballot for consideration by the voters, or the council could have voted to rescind the general plan designation for the church site. But in June 2017, the council voted to proceed with placing the matter on the ballot. In February 2018, the city council entered into a processing and settlement agreement with Hacienda Realty and Russell Stanley regarding the processing of an application for development of the Hacienda site, which would include multifamily housing. The proposal from Mr. Stanley was intended to provide the city with an alternative site for multifamily housing. As required under our Housing Element, as you recall, in Housing Element Program 2.5, the city agreed to rezone the church property to create multifamily on that site, or to find an alternative site if the church zoning did not take effect by December 2016. The Hacienda site was intended to be that alternative site. On June 12, 2018, the city council approved the Hacienda site for development, which included the creation of 15 multifamily residential units. In July 2018, litigation was filed by the neighboring properties, the Tom Tabrizis, challenging the environmental review that was completed for that project. On August 14, 2018, the city council approved a settlement agreement in that case, which allows the Hacienda project to move forward, to be annexed into the city, and to create that alternative site. So the question before you tonight is how to proceed with the referendum, which is currently on the ballot for November 2018. The council has an opportunity at this time to revisit rescinding the general plan amendment, and by doing so, you could also cancel the election. So tonight, before you, you have two resolutions. One would be the resolution rescinding the general plan amendment for the First Baptist Church located at 17765. If you rescind that, it will return to its prior general plan designation, public use. And if you do that, then there would no longer be a need for the election, because you have done what the people requested in the referendum ballot. So if you are to approve the referendum resolution, I'm sorry, if you're to approve the resolution rescinding the general plan amendment, then it would be appropriate to also approve the resolution canceling the election. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for staff? Okay. Seeing none, I would like to now open this up for public hearing. I have two cards, and we'll start off with Nicole McCarty. Nicole McCarty.
Hello. I am Nicole McCarty. Pastor McCarty could not be here tonight. He was unable to make it tonight. So he has asked me to read a letter for you, that he wrote to you. So he said, "Unfortunately, I'm unable to attend the meeting tonight. Speaking on my behalf is myself, Nicole McCarty. I am also the director of Oak Tree Children's Club, which is onsite at the church. I want to thank you for tackling the most difficult issue over the past 10-plus years, and all that time it has been frustrating for both you as the city and us as the church. Hopefully, tonight, we will see a positive resolution for us. I simply want to reiterate that we would desire for the council to rescind the previous zoning decision concerning Resolution Number 3621, the multifamily housing designation. As we have said on multiple occasions, we have no need to ever build such a project. Among other things, it would impact our ability to conduct our ministry, since it would take away over one-third of our property. And now that an agreement has been made with the Hacienda owner, leaving that church as a designated multifamily site doesn't seem to be needed. Thanks for listening, and I urge you, the council, to vote to rescind the previous zoning design." Roger McCarty, pastor.
Thank you very much. And Sean Luthold, come on up.
Thank you for addressing this. I guess with the church here, I'd like to say amen. So, the, as you know, this has gone on a long time. It is the church's desire to return to their old zoning. That door is now open. My understanding with this is that Hacienda is the site that fulfills the multifamily needs, and that is really the crisis that you all faced, and that the prior council really did try their best to address with the church. And then the citizens stood up and asked for a different solution, and of course, Mr. Stanley, the lawsuit had to be settled as well. And I think that you all have put together a great solution for the city here now. So I'm here to urge the city to rescind, return the church to its traditional, to its older zoning, and also, very importantly, going with this is canceling the election. The election is a very divisive issue. It is an unnecessary issue for the community at this time, and it's a not insignificant savings to take that $30,000 of putting this on the ballot and putting it to better use. So I urge you to adopt the measures that are before you today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sean. Okay. I do not have any more blue cards. Would anybody else like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council, and we'll start on my right this time with Councilmember Turner.
Yes. I just wanted to say that I've been involved directly with this issue as a city council member for the past two years. And one of the reasons I ran for council was because I felt that the zoning of the church with 21 units, without their consent, and even despite their strenuous objections, were just plain wrong. Fortunately, the city today has an alternative with the Hacienda property. I know that not everyone likes this solution. I think it's fair to say that if the state were not forcing us to build multifamily housing somewhere in the city, we would not have approved this project. But that project is underway, and in all likelihood, will be built. Now we have the opportunity to right a wrong, and to do the right things right. I will vote to rescind the zoning of the church and take it off the ballot. In the process, we'll save the city over $30,000, the cost of the referendum. With this, we can put this issue to bed, hopefully, once and for all. I wanted to say one more thing. While we have satisfied the state's requirement this time, in the year 2023, a new housing element will come up. The city will be likely required to find more places to put multifamily housing in Montessorino. I will continue to work with the city council members to find a solution that's best for our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Willsheimer?
Thank you. You know, as was mentioned earlier, this has been going on for 10 years now. It's a tough issue, and the only reason where we keep discussing this is because of the state's requirements. The state requires us to do this. If that was not the case, I think the discussions would have been very different, the votes would have been different, probably the Hacienda project as it is now would have been different, the church rezoning would probably never have happened. This is all because of the state requirements. Two years ago, when the church was zoned the way it is now, it was done because of the state's requirements, and there were no alternatives at the time. There were some discussions going on with the owner of the Hacienda, but they appeared to go absolutely nowhere. Things have changed since then. There is now a real alternative. There's actually a project that has been approved by the city council. There was a lawsuit against that project, which has been settled, as we just mentioned, settled by one of the people who was directly impacted by the Hacienda project, one of the neighbors. They have settled this. To me, that's very significant. So the Hacienda project very likely will go on. I can't see why it wouldn't. It's not perfect, but it very likely will go on, which means that the church rezoning is no longer needed. If you accept that the Hacienda project, Montelville Oaks it's called, will continue, the church rezoning is no longer needed. So why are we doing that? Since it's not needed anymore, even though I voted for the church rezoning two years ago, I will now vote to rescind that decision and return the zoning to the original zoning. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmember Ann Standing?
Thanks. The saving $30,000 is significant, and certainly, if the petitioners wanted to withdraw their petition, then we would save $30,000. So that's an easy save. Instead, they've asked us to do that. But this isn't about saving $30,000. To me, this is basically over asking us to take off the ballot, something that the city council, at least four of the people were voted on to become, by the citizens, to become members of the council, and unanimously voted by all five members to rezone that property. And although I think it's quite clear that that was perhaps not the only solution, it was probably at the time the best solution, and I think if we had, we were required, because the Hacienda owners would not develop based upon the zoning that we had provided, which was a very less dense development, nothing like 36 units, since they chose not to develop in that, as we had previously zoned it, they put us in the position, the city in the position, the council in a position, where we had to find someplace in the city to zone. And council, you know, blame the state as much as they want, but frankly, you know, it's the law, and it's the law that we have to comply with. And what we did, and we would have had the same, no disrespect intended toward the good Reverend and the church and the comments this evening, no matter where we had selected a site in the city, we would have had residents coming in that lived in that neighborhood that said, "We don't want a dense development on our property." It would have been the church, it could have been the cul-de-sac I lived on, live on, or it could have been any of your homes that are in the neighborhoods that you live in in Montessorino. The bottom line is this, as far as I'm concerned, there is still time within which another lawsuit can be filed to challenge this particular project. And during that timeframe, it's possible that that litigation could go on for a significant period of time, and in the meantime, we have an opportunity to put before the voters the opportunity to vote on whether or not they think that this referendum should be passed or not. And it seems to me that, you know, since a unanimous panel of the council voted in favor of this, that we should give the citizens the opportunity to vote and leave that option out there. Because frankly, as far as I'm concerned, you know, tonight's adventure in approving this settlement agreement was abusive, an abuse of discretion on the council's part, and that could very easily present a basis upon which this challenge could be made. Because keep in mind, we approved a project several weeks ago, and we approved a project that was then the subject of litigation. And the settlement of that litigation, which could have held up that project for years and for a significant period of time, we're being told, we were told, that this was an insignificante, just minor little variations in the whole transaction. And frankly, we've had 10 years of litigation from Mr. Stanley, and there would not have been a slight little change in the position as it relates to this project. So I don't know that that is necessarily something that's not going to happen. And maybe it will, maybe it won't. But in the meantime, we at least leave on the, for the vote coming up in November, which I think, obviously, it's a divisive one, but it's one that was asked for by a particular group of citizens to overturn what the unanimous council did, and I think they should have a right to vote. So I'll vote to, against rescinding.
Councilmember Rogers?
Okay. I really have to speak up. I've never understood the church's position. I have to be honest. And I'm going to vote to rescind this thing, just because I think it's a waste of money at this point. But to think, all the stuff that's been, misinformation that's been put out there, that eminent domain and all this crap, I mean, really, guys, the church was in control of what was going to be built on that property. They're not going to build anything, so why is all some, we're going to come in as a council and make you guys build something? That's ridiculous. The only reason that I want to rescind this is, first of all, I do not like the Hacienda, what we, what the council has voted on. But I, you know, at this point, it's just going to be a waste of money, because we're going to, the Hacienda is going to be built, we're going to be in compliance, and whatever gets voted on, it won't really matter. So my position is to rescind the property, the designation that we have on that property. So that's how I feel. Although personally, I would love to see this go on the ballot, just because I believe in democracy, and I believe that the people should vote on it, but it just doesn't make any difference anymore, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And any other questions for staff? If not, I'm going to say a comment, then I will ask for a motion in a second, and then we will have a vote on this. So at every time, there's a decision that is right. Back when we did the zoning on the church, it was the right thing to do. I voted for it. It satisfied the requirements. We needed a checkmark on a piece of paper, and that's what we got. A lot of the statements that came after that were just items that were brought forward to really cloud the whole solution that we came up with. There was never any requirement for the church to build anything. There was never any eminent domain, which was thrown about a number of times, as Councilmember Rogers said, and it was a little disingenuous to think that a city council like ours would do something like that. And we could have just placed our checkmark, and we could have gone on with our lives, and we would be in exactly the same place today as we would have been back then. Nothing would have changed. But unfortunately, that's not the way it worked, and because we do have a society that values the ability of the individuals to come forward and to challenge government decisions, that right was exercised and brought forward. The council then respected that, and, not that we could have stopped it, but we accepted it, and we didn't fight it, and we went ahead and said, "Go ahead with the special election." And so the special election is on its way, and if we were to have the election, irregardless of the status of the Hacienda, I would be voting for keeping the election, because then there would be a true decision that needs to be made. But now that we have the Hacienda project approved, we're at a different point in time, so a different solution is called for, in my opinion. If we were to have a vote today, I don't think it would be a genuine vote. It wouldn't be some, a vote that people would need to make a true decision on, because they already have an ace in the hole now, because they know that the Hacienda project has been approved. There could still be challenges, as Councilmember Ann Standing brought up, but most of the challenges that are possible, I think, have a small chance of succeeding, because most projects that we see occur these days with the, with the type of situation and with housing, tend to work themselves out. Somewhere along the line, they will tend to work themselves out. Do I think that there's a lawsuit that exists out there that's going to stop the Hacienda from being built? I personally don't. I'm not a lawyer, but I've been watching the way that politics work for the last eight years. I've gone to a lot of city association meetings and listened to how projects are built in other cities, and once these projects are on a roll, they just tend to not stop. So when I, when I look at the settlement that we just made, and as Councilmember Ann Standing said, we were given the paperwork at 5:30 today, and he feels that this has been very rushed. Well, actually, we got the paperwork last week, so we were given the settlement statements, we were given what the conditions we were, that they were already talking about, and we were also given what the potential modifications to the settlement were. So this wasn't a half an hour decision. This was a decision we've had over a week to think about. We knew that there were going to be some adjustments to the sizes of some of the different units. We knew that the road was being moved over by about 10 feet to the west, and we knew that some of the buildings were also going to be squished a little bit better, I mean, squished a little bit closer together to accommodate the extra room that we're putting on the east side, along with moving the road. So I'd say after a week of being able to debate this, I don't think that spending an extra 30 minutes on it was disingenuous to the citizens of our city. And also, if I had more time, I don't think I would have made my decision, because one of the items that I depend greatly upon is our great staff, and our staff, I thought, did an excellent job. They brought forth all of the pros and cons of the contract, and we pay these guys a lot of money, because they're good. And they've done a good job for the city, for my entire term here, and in the case of our city attorney, even long before that. So I personally want to thank staff for all of the work that they've done today on this. And so to finish up, today's solution calls for rescinding the zoning on the church. At that point, I think the election will not be necessary, and in a way, I think we dodged a very divisive bullet that has come at Montessorino, and I hope that we will be able to regroup and move forward. And I do also want to say that, assuming that certain state laws are not passed, we might be able to use the church for zoning in the future. So I do not want to close the door that this could come forward in the future, because we will constantly be required to look for places that we need to zone. And again, the key is, we have to zone it. We don't have to build on it, we don't have to market it to developers, we don't have to do the building ourself. So I can't sit up here and say, "Guys, this is over with, this is done with." It's never going to come before the council again, because it very much could be coming back again in just a few years. So at this time, I would like to ask for a motion.
I'd like to make the motion, please.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Turner.
Well, actually, motions, well, motion, yeah. I'd like to rescind the zoning of the church, and also make motion to have no election.
Now, do we do, we don't actually vote on the election.
We do. So there's two separate resolutions, so I can help you.
Okay.
The first one would be a motion to approve a resolution of the, hold on just a second, make sure I'm reading the right one. There we go. So it's a resolution of the city council of the City of Montessorino repealing Resolution Number 3621, amending the Montessorino general plan to create a public residential multifamily land use designation, and to amend the land use designation for that certain property located at 17765, Dave's Avenue, as public residential multifamily.
Very well said. Thank you.
Okay. So that's us so moved, and...
I seconded it.
You seconded it? Okay, great. So at this time, we should be getting voting buttons showing up on our electronic devices?
Return her on. Georgia?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, they're all in.
Okay, please record the vote. Okay, so the motion to rescind the zoning passes four to one. Okay, thank you very much.
The second motion would be a resolution of the City Council of the City of Montessorino, rescinding the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Montessorino of a certain measure relating to Resolution Number 3621, amending the Montessorino general plan to create a public residential multifamily land use designation, and to amend the land use designation for that certain property located at 17765, Dave's Avenue, as public residential multifamily, at the general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, as called by Resolution Number 3654. I have a motion. I have a motion by Councilmember Willsheimer.
Okay.
That is exactly the motion that I wanted to move.
I knew that.
Okay, so we need a second for that motion. And Councilmember Turner seconds that motion. The voting buttons will be appearing. Okay, please record the vote.
There you go. Passes four zero.
All right. Thank you very much. Both motions pass this. At this point, we have no more items of business, and I would like to adjourn.